Welcome, guys. We're going to start our Monday, August 26, City Council Work Session. All right, here we go. All right, first on the work session is the presentation of a draft of the comprehensive plan.
I'm not going to talk much tonight. I'm going to let our comp plan team.
Really?
May I appreciate you.
Somebody check his temperature.
Not doing that, but I do understand. Friends and family. I do want to introduce Neil Schaefer is the primary contractor on that. So Becky Rogers with Neil Schaefer, I want to introduce her. And we'll get our comp plan team together to present this.
Good afternoon. Is it afternoon? Yes. Good afternoon. Thank you for having us again. I'm Becky Rogers, project manager with Neil Schaefer. We also have Shane Bergen here with us. And then we had numerous sub consultants that also worked with us on this project. And one of them is here today, Keith Covington with Common Ground. And just to keep it smooth, we've decided to have one presenter through the entire presentation. And Keith's going to be giving that presentation for us. So I'll turn it over to him.
Welcome, Becky.
Thanks, Becky. Lucky you all. I'll try to keep this as top level as I can. I know you guys have quite an agenda today. So it's great to be back in Fair Hope. This is a presentation of the draft comprehensive plan. For those of you who may not know, although I recognize many folks here, the comprehensive plan is a very high-level document, general plan for the community, that addresses things like the management of growth in the city of Fair Hope and all of the various elements associated with that. So what I want to do is try to hit some of the high points of these elements. Some will spend a little bit more time on than others, but I promise to keep this as short and sweet as possible. And we're all available to answer any questions as we go along. First, we would be remiss without recognizing our funding. This was funded by a Restore Council grant in cooperation with the state of Alabama. So we're going to start out with place types. And place types is the part of the plan that really addresses land use and development form and character. We use the term place type because traditionally in comprehensive plans, you would just see a land use map. You would see a land use map with colors on it, and it would represent commercial or residential or industrial or whatever. And evolution of comprehensive planning over the years is that we want to think more than just the use of the property. So for example, those two images that you see on the presentation there, in a traditional land use plan, both of those images would show up as, let's say, red for commercial. But you can see just from these two kind of limited frame images that the character and form of that development is very, very different. And so that's why we don't, land use is considered, but it's not the only thing considered. So the types of things that determine a place type besides land use include its spatial patterns, the intensity and density of development, the scale of it, the form of it, and the character of it. So it really starts to dig a little bit deeper. There are five key place categories, key place type categories for the city of Fair Hope's comprehensive plan. They range from natural to urban, and then there's a special. And I'll talk a little bit more about what each of those are. But it's important to note that those are the top level and that each of those categories has several subcategories in them. What do you do with this? Not only is it a guidance for staff as they're making recommendations and staff reports to Planning Commission, but it can also help to influence the zoning of your land. So you want the zoning to eventually align with your place types. And so the second part of this process is to update the zoning regulations to align them better. This is a graphic that shows what we call the transect or the rural to urban transect. This is actually from a model code called the SMART code. And it just graphically shows the different areas within a community from those natural areas that are kind of in their natural state all the way up to your downtown. And so it's a great organizing tool. Obviously, there's some blending, but that's kind of the basis for that. So as far as the place types for the city of Fair Hope, we have a map. It does have colors on it. It also has some other symbols on it. But those colors really represent those different place types. Each one of the place types and their subtypes has, you know, two to four pages in the document that gets into elements such as, you know, land use, geographic form. There's a section we call building blocks, which kind of helps to establish some of the sort of bulk standards that we would expect to see as part of this plan. And so that's how the plan itself does that. So I'm not going to get into that level of detail tonight. I just want to kind of hit on what each of these place types does. So beginning at the least developed area, the natural areas, these are your areas that you want to protect for their environmental integrity. Then stepping up, you have your rural areas. That's areas where agricultural uses dominate, but there are some very low-density residential development, too. So the natural areas, what you sort of see in the dark green, there's kind of two elements of that. There's the dark green and something that you probably can't see on this map, but it's more clear in the plan itself. And that is potential wetlands and so forth. Those are hatched and floodplains, which are hatched because those kind of have different standards associated with it. The rural area is that lighter green that you see on there, and that's a good portion of the area that's in your planning jurisdiction, but is outside of your actual municipal boundaries. Moving on up, we have the suburban areas. We have the mixed-use centers, which are the dark red areas primarily to the east of the city. These are master plan mixed-use developments that are ideally interconnected. They create appropriate transitions to surrounding lower-intensity areas, and they address major corridors. This is a bit different from the previous comprehensive plan because it really recognizes that these are major thoroughfares that some of these centers are located on and tries to address what the character of development should be. And then also, again, transitioning to the lower-intensity areas around there, that's very important. And so we provide guidance in the plan in that regard. We also have mixed-use nodes, which you really can't see on this map, but they're blowups in the master plan, or excuse me, in the comprehensive plan. And these are smaller neighborhood-serving commercial nodes that are not really intended, at least at this time, to grow into larger mixed-use centers. The yellow, which is a good portion of your community, is what we call suburban residential. And these are both existing residential developments that will remain as such for the foreseeable future, but also other areas that could be residential. But we, again, provide guidance that they be master plan development, that they're interconnected, and that there's a real emphasis on the building and not the garage when it comes to residential developments. And that when it's adjacent to corridors, which a lot of them would be, that they're buffered from that to maintain those corridors and that view along those corridors. Stepping up in scale to our urban place types, those are the areas that are right around your downtown. First, you have the core. That's, you know, pretty much centered along Section Street and Fair Hope Avenue. This is your historic downtown. Buildings there are much closer to the sidewalk. There are active uses at street level on key streets. And of course, the scale and character of any new development needs to really be based on Fair Hope's historic character to keep that continuity. We have a small section of downtown corridor. It's hard to see on this map, but again, it's larger in the comp plan. This is North Section Street. This is probably what started out as the first sort of suburban corridor. It stretches from essentially where we are now to right up before the marina. And you can see that the buildings are a little bit more set back, but it's definitely different than what you see out on Greeno or 181 or things like that. And then, of course, the traditional neighborhood is probably the swatch of color that you see the most. Those are the historic neighborhoods. And in those situations, again, we see those areas as being stable and not going anywhere for any foreseeable future. But if infill opportunities happen or arise, that any sort of new development respects that historic pattern of development in those areas. Then we have a category called special, and that's for a whole series of elements that or development types that don't necessarily fit into the traditional development form. And those are various colors. You can see some of the larger ones, the blue, the largest one being the airport. So the airport, we don't think of the airport as a neighborhood, but it certainly has uses around it that support its purpose. And so all of those types of categories or types of development patterns that don't really fit well into one of those other areas are given a special designation. But each of those has some guidance on land use and form and character as well. Now, I'd like to jump into community design because that is right-hand, goes hand-in-hand with the place types because design is critical. Just overarching principles, walkability is important. We heard that a lot from the community. But that means not just, you know, providing sidewalks, but also comfortable, friendly sidewalks that are safe and interesting and attractive along the way, places you can stop, not just to get from point A to point B. A mixture of uses where appropriate is really important in community design because it promotes walkability. And also, it puts uses within close proximity of the people that are using them. So it requires less driving if they're designed properly. Speaking of driving, motor vehicles, we obviously have to accommodate them, both their storage as well as their movement. But we want to calm that motor vehicle influence so that we're designing for people and not only the car, but still accommodating them. And then generous landscaping. The city of Fair Hope has a tradition of landscaping both in its downtown, along its major corridors with the live oaks and so forth. You want to continue that and enhance on that. So those are the overarching principles when it comes to design. So, you know, we have our urban areas and we have our suburban areas. So what we wanted to do was just to do a scenario for how some of these principles might be applied. So in the downtown area, we chose the downtown post office site. We did not choose this because the post office is going anywhere. This is not a master plan. This is not a suggestion that the post office will be redeveloped. It just gave us a really good opportunity to illustrate that if something happened on that site in the future, what would that, you know, how could you do something that fits more with the downtown character than what's currently there? I mean, if you look, this is obviously an aerial view of the post office site. It's a massive building, much more massive than most of the buildings in downtown. It's set back from the streets. There's parking in front, really on all sides, pretty much. Some of the leftover open space where there's some mature trees is just that. It's leftover. It's not really activated and so forth. So if this were to be redeveloped in the future, how could it be done in a manner that actually fits with the context of downtown? Well, this is also a large site. So this gives you a lot of opportunity to actually illustrate a lot of these principles. So first of all, with this type of development, there's a bit of a slope on this post office property. Working with the existing topography and site features is where it should really begin, trying to not manipulate things so much. And that includes preserving mature trees where possible. And then when you have a larger site like this, there aren't any of them in Fair Hope, but if you do, you want to make sure that those larger sites are broken up into streets and blocks that are similar in size to downtown Fair Hope. So that means with a street or with a pedestrian passage and so forth. And you can kind of see that, this is obviously, again, a 2D version of that, but you can kind of see how the site is broken up. There's also land use that's addressed. So along Fair Hope would be an ideal opportunity for mixed use, where you have shop fronts at street level, diagonal parking, wide sidewalks, because you expect more pedestrian traffic, as well as street trees. But the majority of parking is located behind the buildings. And then as you move north, you want to transition to a kinder, gentler form of development where you're still creating a mixture of housing types, whether it be townhouses or small flats or duplexes that resemble single-family houses, so that you create that transition away from Fair Hope Avenue to where you're meeting other neighborhood streets. So transitioning down that building scale is really important. Also important when we talk about mobility and moving people is having an internal sidewalk system, even if these aren't public streets, that you have an internal sidewalk system that connects to the public network so that it allows people to not only move within the development, but to easily get to downtown, which is only a couple of blocks away. And then, of course, where appropriate, incorporating civic spaces that are actually usable civic spaces and not just simply the leftover space. So this is just an illustration of how, of some of those principles. And we also had a renderer, an artist do a rendering of what this might look like. And so you can sort of see along Fair Hope Avenue, kind of moving from bottom left to top right, you can see that that is where more of the mixed-use character is, like you would see perhaps on Section or on Section Street and some of Fair Hope Avenue. And then stepping down to a more single-family kind of character along the neighborhood streets. The images that you see on the left are not intended to show, you know, a particular style of architecture. They're just intended to show how you can incorporate different building types within this. So, you know, the most urban is the one in the bottom right corner where you see three stories and mixed-use retail on the ground floor. Buildings are right towards the sidewalk. But the image just above it is also mixed use. That's in Birmingham, Alabama. The other one's in, just outside of Atlanta, Georgia. In Mount Laurel, there are two-story mixed-use buildings where there's retail on the ground floor and then office or residential above. And then even when you get into the residential types, the images on the left, one, both of these are actually in Louisville, Kentucky. These are buildings that are designed to look like single-family houses, but are actually multiple units. So there are ways to incorporate this diversity of housing types and this diversity of uses in buildings all within a single development. And this can be applied at whatever scale, whether it's a larger site like this, which we don't have much of, or on a smaller scale. We also have a number of centers, as I pointed out, that are really important to note as well. The biggest ones are kind of your mixed-use centers we talked about. There's a smaller center at the airport industrial, airport and industrial technology area. That's a different kind of character. And then, of course, there are those small commercial nodes. But the principles are still applicable in these situations. It's just the context has changed a little bit because these are typically located near or along major corridors. So in the suburban-type situation, we also wanted to do a development scenario. This is at the intersection of 181 and 104. This is where the Publix is. Of course, you don't see it in this aerial photograph. This was taken, obviously, before that. Again, this is not a development proposal. This is just an example of how future development along these corridors and at the intersection of these corridors could be designed in a more cohesive pattern so that it actually creates a better overall development in the future, but still has a more suburban context. So currently in the area, and this is typical, not just in Fair Hope, but in a lot of places, you tend to have a lot of more separated uses in suburban areas, large parking lots in front, no kind of consistent setbacks and so forth, and not a lot of connectivity between development and within the development. And they're very auto-oriented and auto-dominant. They're not a place where if you chose to walk, it's very comfortable to do so. So what we did was we took this example and said, okay, if this were master planned, what could that, how would we do that in a way that embodied these principles? So the gray building that you see on the bottom left is the existing Publix and the inline retail. But there's all that land around it, too. Now, I'm sure it has its own development plans, but again, this is just an example. So what we're trying to establish is, is that we're not trying to urbanize the key corridors. We're trying to give sort of a consistent setback, landscape buffers and so forth along those corridors. But we're really focused on what happens within the sites and how do you master plan that? Well, similar to downtown, you definitely want to preserve sensitive natural features on any site and master plan. That's the important thing, not just do it one-off, but really think about them being master planned together. And then connectivity, both between developments and individual sites. Along major corridors, instead of having buildings that are really close to a very, you know, fast-moving corridor, you know, buildings should really front internal streets or have limited parking in front to get some sort of consistent setback and also have a generous landscape buffer. Again, you could utilize the live oaks theme and so forth. Consolidating access points is really important. It helps with congestion. It helps to link up other developments. And then within those developments, having interconnected streets and blocks that development fronts, where parking is located to the interior blocks or is screened with a year-round hedge is really, really important. And then, of course, with any sort of development, instead of separating the uses, seek a mixture of uses and a mixture of building types. And that mixture should really transition from sort of the center of the development to the edges where you transition to lower-density houses. So you can kind of see the brown building sort of represent buildings, and they step to single-family lots as you move closer to the neighborhoods around there. And then also, having civic spaces, whether they're private or public, doesn't really matter as long as they're maintained, but having spaces that are usable spaces for people. And then obviously, for your regional connections, having a multipurpose trail or bike lanes or so forth actually creates that connection on those major corridors. So again, like we did with the urban scenario, we did, had an illustration done that kind of illustrated some of these things. So the Publix is still there. The inline retail is still there. All of its parking is still there. But on those frontages, you see a little bit more consistent setback. You see a landscape buffer along the frontage. You see an interconnected network of streets within and then connections to outside development. And the images on the left, again, it's not really about architecture. It's just about how to create a form and character, whether you're fronting a street or whether you're fronting a parking area, that is a little bit more consistent with the historic fabric of downtown and historic Fair Hope, not, even though it's in a more suburban condition. And again, that mixture of building types is really key there. How do you get there? One of the ways that you could do this in preserving your existing visual character is to develop design guidelines. There's a recommendation to study this. There's a model there on the right. You could do the citywide. You could do it on key corridors. You could focus on specific areas. But it's really important to have those. You would need a technical review committee that includes some design professionals on that committee. But in the early going, that could be the Planning Commission or a subcommittee of the Planning Commission to enforce those standards. This is a residential example, but just as sort of some of the default standards, if you're thinking about in your, you know, traditional neighborhoods, is, you know, Fair Hope has that distinctive kind of, a little bit of a coastal character because you're on a coast, albeit the bay. Pitched roofs, you have some specific materials. You know, there's a lot of wood cladding. Doesn't mean that brick wouldn't be appropriate or whatever, but it just gives you a flavor for how do we preserve and enhance the character of Fair Hope in places other than its historic downtown. When you have buildings that are closer to the street, they're typically raised up a little bit to provide a little bit of a dimension between the sidewalk and the buildings. You see a lot of front porches in Fair Hope. You wouldn't necessarily have to mandate them, but it's something that you could give guidance on. And then obviously, extensive landscaping, particularly if there's native. Now, there would always be exceptions to these standards, and you can provide criteria for that, but that's kind of how design standards work. So moving on to another major section of the plan, which is natural resources. So some of the best practices that are turned into recommendations in the plan are obviously to conserve your natural resources, whether that means acquiring property that's adjacent to natural areas or wetlands so that they're preserved in their natural state. Also, protecting existing trees is really important. And to the extent feasible and doable and agreeable to everyone, prohibiting development in the floodplains. Floodways are already off limits. Floodplains, there's a lot of talk and debate about what you can and can't do. But the idea here is conserve as much of that as possible because that's your natural beauty, and it helps from an environmental standpoint. Establishing green space. We've talked a little bit about this with regards to the developments. But enforcing your current green space requirements within new developments and then implementing a maintenance plans so those, for those areas that are not covered by existing agreements. And then reducing pollutants, you know, make sure that developers are held accountable for maintaining erosion control. And then, of course, when it comes to stormwater, filtering stormwater through low-impact development practices, which we'll hit on just in a minute, and then minimize pavement as much as possible. That is, those are all things that start to go towards protecting those natural resources. As does promoting a living shoreline and using natural materials to protect aquatic plant and habitats. Another recommendation is to develop or update your codes that enforce environmental stewardship. And then also, it doesn't always have to be a sticks sort of thing. It'd be a carrots thing, too. You know, you could incentivize some of these things by reducing permit fees, offering tax credits, stormwater fee discounts, and even public recognition. These are things that can incentivize people to incorporate some of these best practices into their development. So when we say low-impact development, what does that mean? It really means managing stormwater runoff in a way that's mimicking sort of the natural process. And the goal would be, obviously, to protect water quality and preserve your natural habitats. So in traditional stormwater infrastructure, you have a lot of piping that transports to storage areas or treatment plants and then to local water bodies. Green infrastructure actually starts to treat stormwater runoff at its source and starts to filter that stormwater and clean it and actually let it redistribute into the water table. So there's a whole myriad of tactics and techniques, and those are covered in the comp plan. I won't go through all of them now, but, you know, they're a whole, everything from how you collect it, how you channel it, how you store it, how do you treat it, filter it back into the system. These are all things. And some of these you're already doing, but it's an opportunity to expand on that, and it has great benefits. Historic preservation. We all know that Fair Hope is, has a great historic character. I hear it mentioned a lot. I work throughout the southeast, and a lot of people talk about how much they love downtown Fair Hope and its neighborhoods. One of the things about historic preservation is how do you preserve that? So having a national register status is great because it, you know, it recognizes the significance of a particular area. And there are even tax credits for certain qualified properties, both at the state level and the federal level. The shortcoming of a national register status is that there's really no protection locally for those properties unless it's through some sort of federally funded project. So in the comp plan, we make sort of recommendations to explore local historic zoning so that you can control demolitions and alterations infill. I know that's been a subject over the past, so we're just suggesting that you explore that. It needs to have an educational campaign that talks about the pros and cons of such a designation. And then, we don't typically recommend that a community go through this without substantial property owner support. But if you do, you adopt a preservation ordinance, you designate the districts, you create the design guidelines, and then you pursue CLG, your certified local government status, which can really help to get some assistance and grant funding from the state for various purposes. So there are some benefits to that, and there's a process, though, however, to go through. Another consideration is if you decide to go the route of creating a local historic district for downtown or your neighborhoods or whatever, to make sure that, you know, to make it palatable to owners is to really only review work that's visible from the street and try not to review things that are more subjective, like paint colors and so forth. And then obviously, to promote this, you could do existing tax incentives for rehab or consider even new ones. Mobility, that is another key component of the comprehensive plan. So your transportation system, the city of Fair Hope's transportation system, needs to focus on efficient routes of travel, safety for motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians. The context of those roads matters, like where that road is going, whether it's in downtown or whether it's a suburban or rural area. And then considering all modes of transportation where appropriate, and then connectivity between outlying neighborhoods and downtown. This is really important. These are all principles that the transportation system should consider. So as part of the comprehensive plan, there are a series of idealized road cross-sections for the different functional classifications of roads. So your arterial roads are your most heavily-traveled roads, and your local roads are your least-traveled roads. And so these are not to be, you know, they're not set in stone that every street is going to be this way, but what it is, is it's an opportunity to see what are the components for an arterial versus a local road? And what should we be looking at when we're, when we're looking at new development and the types of roads that are going through it or improvements to our existing roads? So those are a couple of the larger roads there on the right. And then this one is more the local level, so you can see that the scale is very different. Obviously, your residential areas are different from your local roads that are more commercial, whether there's on-street parking, how wide the sidewalks are, what sort of landscaping or streetscaping is along the street. All of these are intended to provide guidance as the Planning Commission and the council make decisions on these sorts of things. You have a lot of main thoroughfares in the city of Fair Hope. Obviously, your north-south ones, like 98, Greeno, Highway 181, and the future Road 13, County Road 13. East-west, Highway 104, Fair Hope, County Road 44, that's Twin Beach, and then County Road 32. These are all kind of important organizing thoroughfares in your community. But in those, we've identified several that should be multimodal corridors. These are things that have been considered in the past and things that the community suggests as well. Obviously, Section Street is Obviously Section Street is sort of that north-south and then Fair Hope Avenue is that east-west in terms of the ones that are most important to address multiple modes of transportation, not just automobiles. So if we talk about motorized transportation for a second, we want to maintain our existing roads, evaluate signal timings, implement the complete streets policy. If you don't know what that is, that's about a complete street, a street that considers not just the automobile but all modes of transportation based on the context of where it's located. Continue your beautification efforts and obviously review and update your tree ordinance to add roads and determine if the, if green space is still adequate. For subdivision roads specifically, providing connectivity among neighborhoods to other parts of town is really critical. So that's connecting neighborhoods together, but also connecting those neighborhoods to the core of the city. Incorporating sidewalks, bicycle lanes or multi-use paths where appropriate, all of that depends on context. And then obviously maintaining safety by implementing traffic calming measures where appropriate. From a parking standpoint, which is particularly an issue in your downtown, improving wayfinding signage to direct the traffic to public parking. I know there's some things that have been considered about that, we wholeheartedly agree with that. And then other things to offer incentives for downtown employees and students to utilize surface lots and parking decks instead of the street parking so that customers get the opportunity to use that street parking, that upfront parking. Another recommendation would be the consideration of private paid parking lots, electric charging stations and parking management. Implementing parking limits through signage, don't necessarily have to do meters, but you could, but regardless of whether it's meters or whether it's time limit parking, you have to have the enforcement component of that. So it's not as simple as just checking that box, but it is definitely something that a lot of smaller downtowns have done and done fairly successfully. Transit and ride share, making sure that you have amenities near transit stops and then potentially having a special event shuttle to and from downtown and obviously promoting ride share services so that you don't have so much of a dependence on car. And then of course, we all know low-speed vehicles are an issue, continuing to update your city codes to regulate that usage and provide limited parking downtown for that so that you sort of keep a tab on that sort of low-speed vehicle traffic. As far as non-motorized traffic goes, you really need to create a detailed bicycle pedestrian and greenway master plan that you can implement incrementally over time. For bicycle facilities, it's not just simply a shared lane or a bike lane, there are a whole slew of different types of facilities and tools that can be used based on the context. So improving connectivity, but also providing the facility itself is important. For pedestrians, obviously improving sidewalk connectivity is good and making sure that new development and new roads have sidewalks along them. Continuing to work on your ADA transition plan and continuing to add pedestrian cycles to your traffic signals. You have a few today, but they could certainly be expanded. So there's also two maps in the document, one that shows the proposed bicycle infrastructure and the one proposed, the one that shows the proposed pedestrian infrastructure and these are kind of the main two maps in this section. This would be something that would be a starting point for a deep, more detailed plan, but this helps to give you some priorities in the interim as to where those networks should be. And we also need to think about mixed-use greenways and trails. I mean, you know, you have a great number of gullies and natural features and so beyond just what's along the roads, there's opportunities to incorporate a whole greenways master plan that takes advantage of some of that. That could be an actual really good tourism draw as well, ecotourism. And these sort of paths could connect major destinations and provide something not only for the community, but also for people that visit the community. Infrastructure facilities. So obviously from a utility standpoint, continue to obtain dedicated easements that are necessary, increasing your maintenance staff as the town grows, you have to be able to serve that and then obviously storage space too, which is also a function of some of the growth that's inevitable with any, most any community. As far as specific utilities, we would recommend that from an electric standpoint, that you look at additional renewable energy opportunities, electric charging stations and making sure that new electrical lines are underground when feasible and that really helps with the overall streetscape and so forth. For natural casks, you know, again, installing redundant feeds and lines to have a lot of options when trouble arises or there needs to be maintenance. Again, increasing facilities to serve that, tracking and tracing the system, using your GIS system can help with maintenance, upgrading existing lines and then establishing new rates for gas consumption and marketing to make sure that you don't lose customers. From a water sewer standpoint, obviously supply is important, which includes not only wells but storage tanks, upgrading line sizes and so forth, regulating private wells and then also water conservation is important. We know that that's especially important right now. And then also upgrading sewer lines as well and look for possibilities of a new treatment plant on the south side of town to accommodate future growth. From a stormwater standpoint, we've talked a little bit about low-impact development for development, but obviously we have existing systems in place. So again, replacing those on an incremental basis is really important. Addressing drainage issues on a case-by-case basis or in an area-by-area basis. Incorporating those low-impact practices and potentially locating a regional stormwater facility that can help alleviate some of the current issues. And any sort of pervious surfaces like we talked about before is really going to help to reduce the amount of stormwater runoff that affects your community. Community facilities, repurposing city property is really important. Renovating underutilized properties into new community facilities is a recommendation in this plan and being able to adaptively reuse those for new types of uses is really important. Then there's also new facilities. A performing arts center was, we heard that consistently throughout the process, but also in addition to that, a branch library, recreation center and outdoor pool are things to consider, especially for the southern portions of Fair Hope where not as many community facilities are there and on the east side as well. Speaking of public space and recreation, we, you know, this was just one of the questions that we had where we surveyed sort of what sort of recreational facilities are needed in here, in Fair Hope. And you can see that there's a lot there. There were a lot of others that didn't, you know, that are individual comments, but there's a good, healthy amount. So we took the National Recreation and Park Association sort of benchmarks for communities similar to the size of Fair Hope and we sort of compared your current facilities. It seems that you substantially exceed the baseline for a lot of those different facilities. You can see that on the left. You're a bit short in terms of playgrounds. Playgrounds are really important, especially in neighborhoods and ice rinks, although I don't think there will likely be a whole lot of demand for ice rinks, but you can see that you're making great progress on that. So the recommendations here are really to design more parks for passive recreation. You have a lot of active recreation. We already mentioned that in the eastern and southern portions of Fair Hope, there's some deficiency there. And then the recreation board has a great list of priorities that they've been working through and this plan supports that and recommends, you know, continuing to support that effort. And then upgrading the Fair Hope Dog Park as well. I'm not going to go through all of these priorities, but these are the priorities for the recreation board and they're all very good. Some of them are already underway, some of them are close to completion, so there's been a lot of recent achievements, but these are all important things that the comp plan fully supports in that regard. As far as public services go, education is always a big one, especially in a growing community. The Baldwin County Board of Education develops their projection models. Majority of what they see as new enrollment is at the elementary level, but they say that there's land readily available for expansion and there are some negotiations that are ongoing. So as far as recommendations go, just continue that coordination with BCBE. That's really important to address Fair Hope's education needs. And then also considering growth at higher education campuses when adding and updating infrastructure. So you have some colleges either leasing space or using space now or have campuses in town. Continuing to consider that as you think about the future is really, really important. From a public safety standpoint, there are obviously staffing needs. At the police department, we interviewed the police department and we identified some of those recommendations are in the plan. And then there are some infrastructure needs as well, including a new precinct on the east side of the city. As far as the fire department, the fire department could benefit from a strategic plan. A new station is really needed on the north end of 181 and really there should be a feasibility study that is completed to really consider whether or not it's time for Fair Hope to transition from a volunteer to paid. So you could do a public, an overarching recommendation would be to develop a 10-year strategic plan for your public safety. As far as healthcare goes, the reserve just recently opened and is going to meet a lot of our needs of our older population. Thomas Hospital, it's an existing full-service facility. And then you also have the USA Health MAP family campus too. So you are seeing increases in these things and our recommendation there is simply to continue to support that and evaluate what new needs arise as your population grows and evolves. I mentioned earlier that the performing arts center was heard a lot throughout the process, so we had our economists look at it a little bit closer. It is economically feasible and the way to accomplish this may be to re-energize the arts committee so that you develop a strategic plan for how to get that done. And in the process, identify partnerships with different organizations and so forth that can actually help to use that space as well. And there's a funding assistance out there as well from the Alabama State Council of the Arts and the National Endowment for the Arts. So it's viable, there are things, but it just needs a strategic plan to move it forward. From a housing standpoint, a key recommendation is increasing diversity in housing choice and that means creating opportunities for housing units that maybe are in that spectrum. We always think of housing as like, okay, there's the single-family house on detached house on a lot and then there's the apartment complex and those two are often at odds. But in planning terms, we like to call this missing middle where there's a whole bunch of building types and housing types that could meet a variety of needs that fit in well with neighborhoods and could be great for Fair Hope to really increase that diversity. And it could also help to enhance affordability as well. You could incentivize these developments to retain local character and quality by providing service and fee discounts, fast-tracking approval processes and so forth. So there are ways to incentivize developers to meet the needs of the community in terms of housing. And then of course, there's the issues that has kind of been gone back and forth. I think it's getting settled now, but really looking at how do we address those issues when it's outside the planning jurisdiction, or excuse me, outside the municipal boundaries and in the planning jurisdiction, but you don't really necessarily have a lot of control over that. Well, one of the ways that you could do this, and our economists put this together, is really focus on potentially gaining control in areas of the, outside of the city limits. With, by doing so, you can actually have a master plan done, design standards associated with that, create an RFP process for private developers, you could partner with other agencies or entities such as the Single Tax Corporation. And what the city does is it helps to kind of facilitate this process and that allows you to strategically say, this is an area that we may grow in the future or that we want to grow in the future and here's how we make sure that what happens there is, we're being proactive about it, that what happens there is keeping with the character of Fair Hope. And that maybe takes some of the guesswork out. There's a lot of legwork involved with that, but there is, it is a good consideration for how to address those development challenges outside of the city limits. Moving on to economic development now, supporting unique and locally-owned businesses is obviously really important. That's one of the great assets of Fair Hope is you have all these locally-owned businesses. Working, creating a working group of all the landlords, real estate brokers and so forth that can track movements and lease requirements is really important to making sure that spaces don't stay empty for long. Assisting smaller businesses with codes and regulatory processes so that they're not encumbered with some of the things that are harder to deal with than, you know, some national chain somewhere. Creating sites and building inventory so that you have an active database of these spaces. And really considering an economic development director position for the city might help to guide a lot of these policies. Again, it's not going to happen all at once, but this is, these are the sort of things that they could be tasked with. And then obviously in addition to that, recruiting new businesses. You have the performing arts center, specialty stores, all these niche sort of businesses really expanding on what makes Fair Hope great now. You also have this technology sector that is worth considering in terms of really building on that, building on the work of Hatch, for instance, the existing business resource for technology-based entrepreneurs in Baldwin County. By leveraging development of building space to accommodate folks that have been through that sort of program keeps them here. And there's a number of recommendations for how to do that through partnerships, through coffeehouse links and so forth, but these are things that can really start to help to grow that tech sector and also bring in, keep younger people in this area because Fair Hope's a great place to live and if they can work here and live here, all the better. From a recreation and ecotourism development, tourism standpoint, you know, I already mentioned about the idea of capitalizing on some of your natural features with greenways and so forth. These are amenities and they can be obviously for local residents first and foremost, but also for visitors to the community while also protecting and those natural resources as you do that. So you really want to build on your existing strengths and your unique characteristics. You could even consider for navigable areas, kayaking and other paddle boating in those areas, promoting bicycle routes and engaging with the Single Tax Corporation because they I think have some of those gullies and so forth in there. So there's an opportunity to create this network and really leverage tourism and other development from that and recreation while providing that service to the community. And then also small-scale sensitive lodging and in-development. I mean, you have, you have one hotel downtown now, there's not any, there's some Airbnbs and other things like that, but those things sort of impact housing costs. So really trying to, as you're, you know, looking at and promoting recreation ecotourism development, you can also kind of incentivize and work to encourage that there are places for people to stay while they're here. And so there's a lot more detail about that in the plan. Physical health. So there was a physical impact analysis done that looked at the costs and benefits of certain land uses in the community and this is a snapshot of that. I'm not an economist, so I will kind of tell you what I glean from this information. So retail, obviously, or perhaps maybe unknowingly to you, generates the most significant gross revenue benefit to the city. And it's also, it's really due to retail sales and related taxes being a major source of revenue. Residential benefits, on the other hand, are lower per acre because there's more of a lower-density sprawling development pattern. So when we look at costs, while retail generates the highest operating cost, okay, a lot of that's attributable to traffic impacts, also public safety and so forth. So that's a, that's a good thing that it generates those revenues because it does have the higher operating cost. But for the fiscal cost for other uses, those costs are much lower or roughly equal on a per-acre basis. So what does all this mean? What are the net impacts of this? So retail, office and industrial provide a lot of net physical benefit, but residential impacts are negative, suggesting that those commercial, industrial and office uses are really starting to subsidize the residential. And with higher densities and values, that mix of housing types that's appropriately designed, as we talked about, could help to balance those things out a little bit more. So key strategies in terms of your physical health is continuing to retain your excellent physical conditions. Look at the impacts on physical health. What is the marginal cost of sprawling type development? How do you account for impacts in infrastructure planning and service delivery? How do you account for impacts in, in infrastructure planning and service delivery? Consider opportunities to establish differentiated utility rates, and then also working with the county to calculate physical impacts of land uses on both the city and county as an education tool. You can also establish asset management strategies such as the utilization of city facilities and assets, and then also help control and encourage character-based development outside the city limits, which also helps to reduce sprawl and, and improves fiscal returns. So the last section of the plan is what we call plan implementation, because the last thing that we want is for a plan to sit on a shelf and collect dust. So how does this plan get adopted and what does it mean? So, so a comprehensive plan is not law, it is policy, okay? It's, it's intended to be guidance for decision-makers. The planning commission would be the entity to, to adopt the plan, the comprehensive plan. They would also be the spearheading group of that plan. The planning staff obviously would provide support to that, and, and, and then being able to report back to the council and the mayor on a regular basis is, is really important. I worked for a community in Marshall County, Tennessee, that every year when they do their town hall, they take a small amount of time and say, here's what we've checked off on our strategic plan and our comprehensive plans. And, and it's good to pat yourself on the back every once in a while and say, these are the things that we're moving towards. The other thing with the comprehensive plan is that it should be seen as a living document. It is flexible. Things change, circumstances change. You have an opportunity to revisit the plan when certain things come up and adjust it as needed. And then obviously, in, in that same sort of vein, update the plan regularly. It may have a 20-year horizon, but you really should try to update it, you know, every five years. Not every community does that, but that's something to consider because, again, things change, new things, new opportunities arise, and it gives you an opportunity to do that. From a policy revision, zoning ordinance and map, we talked about that at the very beginning, some improvements to that. Subdivision regulations, other development policies, but not just regulations, also look at financial programs and incentives. These are the things that should come after that, and the zoning ordinance is going to start almost, updates to the zoning ordinance are going to start almost immediately. Then obviously, the, there are many capital projects that could come out of this, and this is a way for the community to prioritize those capital improvement projects. And there's a matrix in that, in that document that identifies all of these sort of major things. It gives you the page numbers in the comprehensive plan where you can learn more about it. Who might be responsible for leading that effort, and what's the timeframe? Is this something that we need to do now, or can we do it more in the midterm or long term? And that is how you kind of take all of those things that we talked about today and all the extra detail that's actually in the plan itself, and really start to see it happen over time. So with that, thank you for letting me get through that marathon, and our team is happy to answer any questions or take any comments that you have.
Well, that was comprehensive. I, there was a couple of things. On the, on the thing you said that we were building the recreation at 13 and 34, it needs to be 13 and 32. So, but it sounds like a plan, man. I like the matrix, something that we can follow to implement the plan. That was, that's good. I don't know if that's new or you just haven't been doing it.
It's, it's something that we try to put into all of our plans just to give that sort of guidance. But again, even then, it, it at least kind of organizes it for you, makes it a little bit easier.
Counsel?
Yeah, I could, I probably need to sit down with you for about a week.
Yeah.
A lot of really good information, you know, as a council member that, you know, there's a lot of things that I'd like to do that just, that cost money. A lot of that's seemingly hard to do. You know, some things that echoed with me were the design standards, it may be focusing on certain corridors, I think, where we're exploding right now. So I'm just kind of talking to the mayor and his staff and the council about this, you know, it would be, you know, the 181 corridor, you know, the sooner we can get some implemented. But, you know, one of the problems that we've always had is that property is in the county. Now, our planning jurisdiction doesn't extend it to the county anymore. Now, we're limited to our municipal limits, and we've got a lot of that developing. I'd love to take some of those pictures that you've shown and give them to some developers before they started it, but, you know, at this point, without those standards, we can't force them to adopt whatever. They just bring us this, and we may say, oh, we like it or we don't. Our planning commission may say, our staff may say, we like it or we don't. Then they retool it and bring it back.
It's a challenge.
It, it's a real challenge, and so I, you know, I kind of look to maybe, you know, experts. I realize the fact, we've got some experts on the planning commission, and I had some to help out the city a lot that are here tonight, and I could look to them to provide some of that guidance on that. And I really think that we urgently need that. That's one of the things. There's many, many things. That one may be stuffed out instantly.
And, and that, that's something that, that has been on our mind throughout this process because of that dynamic between your planning jurisdiction, your municipal boundary and county. At least most of those outlining areas do now have zoning, but again, it may not be the type of character and uses and so forth that the city of Fair Hope would like to see. So, and that's why, you know, it's, 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 I, I get that it might be a big lift, but that's why, you know, it's worth considering the idea of, of if you identify an area that, you know, we know this is where we're going to grow, is there a way that the city could be involved to put together the, the deal to make that happen so that you do have control over it? I understand there's a lot of workings in all of that, but our economist on the team outlines that strategy as one option because it has, you know, he's seen it done in other places, and, and it just, you know, it might come down to that. I've seen that in other communities too, not quite in this particular context, but that's just one of many things. But yeah, I get it. It is a, it is an issue.
You know, being proactive, as you mentioned, as opposed to being reactive. So, you know, I know we can't go to a developer and say, this is what we want, build this, but maybe you can recruit that, although we also have a difficulty, we're growing so fast, we're bursting at the seams. If, if this administration, this council, this mayor was to even suggest to a developer, we want you to build this with, you know, 500 homes and 50 commercial spaces and 50 retail spaces, it almost seems like we're inviting more growth, but if it's inevitable that, you know, the way it's going along a certain corridor, that we could be proactive and say, this is what we'd like.
I think that's important.
Challenges.
Yeah.
I was just going to add too, I think one thing that's helpful for us is that ordinance we now have in place, if they want water, they have to annex into the city, which gives us a little bit of control, especially as we've lost our ETJ. So I think that's helpful too, as we move forward, knowing that we have that in place.
That's good. That is a good tool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, I'm going to read something here from our lawyer. Agenda item two is to go into executive session, all right? As a city attorney, I, Marcus E. McDowell, I hereby request Fair Hope City Council go into executive session based on Alabama Code Section 3625A 7A4 to discuss security plans, procedures, assessments, measures, or systems, or the security and safety of persons, structures, facilities, or other infrastructures, the public disclosure of what could reasonably be expected to be determined to public safety or welfare. As a city attorney, I hereby request the city council of the city of Fair Hope rise from a regular city council meeting on Monday, August 26, 2024, to go into executive session. The city council shall be in executive session for approximately 45 minutes. At the end of the executive session, the city council shall return to the city council chambers to resume the regular city council meeting.
Council president, I mean, we have to vote to go into executive session.
Correct.
Do we have to adjourn the work session and go into regular session to vote?
No.
You can vote in a work session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One way or another.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, I'll make the motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.